So that was the alignment we had at that point. Again, very much looking at, you know, how do we minimize private property impacts? After that, when that was adopted in April of 2018 as the conceptual plan, we started working through more detailed design of that plan. We started working through coordination with the railroad because certainly that's a they're a big player in the plan as it was there. As Dan alluded to, that went on for the better part of a year, looking at different options to address railroad concerns. Ultimately, what we got to, and I'll maybe just step back for a second, is we got to an alignment that's very much was the conceptual alignment. The biggest difference that came along when we did that was that in order to do that conceptual alignment, those in those areas where the closure structures were proposed, the railroad was going to require that we raise the rail line in those areas. And if you can imagine just east of Third Street, if we raised the rail line there several feet, in order for that to happen, we'd have to raise the existing rail bridges so they would be reconstructed. We also would have to raise the Third Street Viaduct in order to provide adequate clearance underneath for rail for rail traffic. And the red lines on here, as Dan alluded to, the red lines on here are sections of track that would have needed to be raised or modified as part of this plan in order to allow that conceptual alignment to go through. So that's really what took our project costs and escalated our project costs up to about $129 million estimate. At that time, the Joint Board and City of Minot applied for a build grant. And as Public Works Director Jonason alluded to, we were offered a portion of our application, up to 18 million in funding from the federal government. However, if you, you know, if you just simply do the math there, take 129 minus the 18, we still got a very expensive project with BN's contribution being capped at about $2 million. So, so at that point, we just have felt that the project has just simply become too expensive. And as a result, we really dropped back to those early alternatives that we looked at back in April to try to come up with a plan that that ultimately reduced the cost due to alignment and reduced the railroad impact so that we could eliminate some of those modifications. And that brings us to what we are showing right now is our current preferred alignment. So biggest change in our current preferred alignment is instead of crossing the tracks, coming to the south side, we would propose to just stay on the north side of the tracks headed out to the east. And we would tie in at a very similar location to where we were proposing on the far east end. In order to do that and allow a flood wall to be constructed along the north side of the rail yard as shown there, we end up having to take railway avenue from where it is today and push it to the north. And to allow that to happen, we would end up having to acquire essentially the first row of private properties on the north side. The plan in this stretch under our current preferred alignment would be really very similar to what's happening in the MI-1 reach between Broadway and Third, where we take the road from where it is today, we push the road to the north to allow us to have room for the flood protection. The image in the upper right is is really just an early rendition to just show the red line there approximately where the flood wall center line would be so that you can see how far that encroaches into the roadway and then to allow the road to be moved to the north. As part of the plan for this area, then, in addition to having the flood wall running essentially from Third Street to about 12th Street on the far east end, because we would have some space there, we would switch to an earthen levy to reduce project costs. That earthen levy would tie up to the hillside and allow for railway avenue to go up and over. Very similar to what you're seeing right now in the area between Broadway and Third. In order to deal with local drainage coming down from from North Hill, we would have to install a pump station on the north side so that when the gates are closed and the flood is there, that we can pump either snow melt runoff or rainfall runoff on the north side. And then really because of our encroachments that would happen on the east end, if those properties were acquired on the east end, we would take advantage of that space then that is available to to incorporate a detention pond over there. Really, the detention ponds really focused on allowing us to to reduce the size of the pump station that's needed so we can save some some costs of the project there by utilizing property that would be required to build the build the alignment regardless. So I show on there the different the different callouts and really the red one being, you know, really the negative of our current preferred option, which is additional property impacts to the north. Sort of parallel to the flood protection, this, you know, the direct flood protection items that are shown on the previous slide. In addition to that, to deal with adjacent amenities, what we're currently proposing is that we would upgrade the pedestrian access path under the existing BNSF bridge on the west end. So the picture in the upper left shows the current pedestrian underpass there. We would look to upgrade that on the west end and use that as really our pedestrian corridor from the north side to the south. And then as part of the project, because of where the flood wall would be at the existing pedestrian bridge is currently, we would be proposing to to remove or eliminate that pedestrian bridge at that location and and really push all pedestrian traffic down to a an underpass location that would be ADA compliant as opposed to the existing bridge with the with the staircase. In addition, on the north side through the flood wall, we would have to install at least two other maintenance openings on the north side because BNSF, well, for two reasons. One, BNSF refuels their their trains on the north side, so they have current access locations that they use for refueling. But we would also use those openings to allow for for the police department to do surveillance, to have openings in there in the event that we have to get emergency vehicles in there between the flood wall and the rail line. So. So under the current preferred alignment, as we have it proposed with no changes, we would look at acquisition of about 15 homes and seven business or commercial properties on the north side. And our total estimated project cost, instead of the 129 million that was shown and submitted in the in the build grant, we're estimating this at approximately 75 million at this So our path forward from here really is the meeting tonight informational, really the first time that the the council gets to see the the current preferred alignment. After tonight's meeting, we would publish notices for a public meeting on February 10th. And we've currently got that scheduled for Roosevelt Elementary in the in the evening. We would notify obviously the neighborhood there as well as the as the media outlets of that meeting, take public comments on what we've heard there, try to incorporate comments that we can into a revised kind of an alternative concept, so do some refinement based on what we hear from the public. And then at that point, once we get those incorporated, we would plan to bring it back to the council here, very similar to what we did in April 2018, and ask for the council to adopt this as the the alignment to go forward with final design. If that happens, if we get through those first four bullets in the early part of March, at that after that, then we would set off on doing our design seminals that are required by the Corps of Engineers, 60, 90, 100% design. That would likely take till about the spring of 2021 to allow project construction either later in 2021 or maybe the beginning of 2022. With that, that's really our the last slide and certainly open it up for any any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate the very detailed report on that, the back history as well as the alternatives. Questions from any of the council? Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, Mr. Benz, walk me back the April of 2018, the original, original concept before we attempted to build grant and working with BNSF to accommodate their various desires. What was, yes, this is the one we're looking at, the total cost of that one was approximately?
The total cost for the construction of of that one at that point was estimated at 47.1 million, if I recall.
Okay. And refresh me again as to why we cannot pursue this.
So Alderman Wolski, so the, in order to do this alignment, I'll just, I'll try to show it without being out of the point here. So what you're seeing in the alignment here is the same same flood protection alignment that will hopefully show up on the next screen. It seems to have locked up. So I'll just try to answer it without showing. So the alignment that we show here from April of 2018 is the same flood protection alignment that we were carrying through the build grant. The cost escalation that happened from the approximately $50 million project at this point to the $129 million project was all associated with reconstruction of the Third Street Viaduct, reconstruction of the existing railroad bridges that exist over the Mouse River, and raising the tracks in the yard area as well as the mainline tracks from approximately Broadway out to about 13th Street. So and if I could get to that sheet though, there it went. So on the image that's on the screen right now, what you would see for the flood protection alignment on the north side is essentially the same as what we had in April of 2018. The big changes are all of the red track realignment and grade adjustments that are shown on the railroad, as well as the reconstruction of the Third Street Bridge and the Mouse River Bridges for BNSF. So they became really additive things above and beyond our flood protection project.
Our understanding, too, was that as BNSF, as this discussion went on, BNSF's deep commitment to not crossing those tracks is what really led through these next phases. Alderman straight.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Benz, so from 47 million to 129 million, and Burlington Northern Santa Fe was going to contribute just how much once again for the general public?
Alderman straight, BNSF's last offer to us was $2 million.
Thank you, sir.
Further questions, Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Benz, just the incorporation, just so I can understand, and maybe you can't give me a solid number, what's the cost difference on, I know we're using a flood wall and a like an earthen levy, like, how does that affect costs? I know you're talking about incorporating both. Is it able, are you able to incorporate if it's cheaper to go with an earthen levy more? Obviously, homes are impacted.
Alderman, probably the best answer I can say is certainly it would be less expensive, probably on the order of half the cost to do a levy. The challenge we have in this stretch here, and I guess the reason that that we have proposed a a flood wall through this segment is in order to get a levy in there, we end up, it takes a lot more footprint room for the levy construction. So we end up having to push Fourth Avenue, Railway Avenue even further to the north. So in addition to acquiring, you know, really the first row of properties, we'd probably be looking at acquiring either the first and second, maybe up to the third row of properties to allow the levy to be situated along there.
Any more questions regarding the MI-5 proposal that has evolved? Alderman straight.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a statement, Mr. Benz, I appreciate you being here, Director Jonason, Mr. Ackerman. The reason why I wanted to move this up tonight, Mr. Mayor, was many of us have been attending SRJB meetings for years. And I I wanted to know that this is not the city's preferred option. These gentlemen, in particular, the team has worked tirelessly to try to move this thing forward in a manner that was not going to affect these property owners. And those of us that were flooded, those of us that have been through numerous buyout meetings, this was the path of least resistance. And the reason I wanted to move it up tonight, sir, was just for this very fact, that this is not our preferred alternative. BNSF, we we need dance partners to play, to make this thing affordable. The team has worked tirelessly to keep this out of lawsuit territory. We've seen what's happened on the eastern part of the state and how that's elevated costs. This is no fun for any of us to have to hear, but I wanted to get it out to the public because of the fact that this is on BNSF. Is, I'm frustrated, I'm angry to hear it, but it's it's important that the public be aware that this is not our preferred alternative. And that's why I asked to move it up, and I appreciate you being here to to provide it. We've been talking about this for a while, just as a result of the attendance at the SIRAServer Joint Board, and it's why it's critical that the public be paying attention. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Benz.
Thank you, Alderman straight. Perhaps even with a little more context, too, there was a significant amount of work with Senator Hoven as well in attempt to try to go with the first preferred option in working with BNSF. So we greatly appreciate the senator, he had been here a couple of times, and meeting with Army Corps of Engineer officials, top level officials, the top officials from our district, working through this. As Alderman straight put, it is very unfortunate that we're going to be looking at acquiring homes that were not flooded because of the secondary levy from 2011, that were not flooded. But given the circumstance of what we have before us and the substantial cost differentiation, I think it is the option that we have to go with regardless of, I think the humanity piece of it with acquiring homes. It is unfortunate, but I think that this is something that with the options that we have before us is the prudent path forward. I don't think we need an official motion tonight, but unless council has a different direction for the folks in engineering with us, I think the proposal that is before us has our support moving forward. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to maybe give my thoughts on this a little bit, and I agree with everything that's been said. This is not, was not our preferred option, it was not, it's not the best option. But again, maybe to Alderman straits, thoughts, we need dance partners to to make this work. And it goes with, obviously, I've mentioned this before, some things that I find concerning is the rate in which we pay for flood protection, surrounding communities with some of the challenges that we face and some of the unforeseen costs that we can, we can see almost a, you know, 50 or $30 million plus spike in in costs. We, it's more important now than ever that our communities come together to to see this project through. And I appreciate all the work that's done on this for avoiding litigation and avoiding any kind of roadblocks. But again, I'll say it again, we need, we need everybody on deck, every little bit counts, small holes sink big ships. So we got a $30 million one that just got poked. So I appreciate this moving forward, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. But again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that that I find it somewhat concerning that just when we see these costs come, come to the the forefront and and maybe, maybe not everyone's paying their fair share, so.
Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, thanks. While I appreciate the the general head nods and the sort of acceptance of this particular circumstance, I think it's important to to recognize that this is not a council action yet, that is coming at a future meeting. I know I'm going to have some questions that are going to filter in, they're not all arriving on the spot tonight, but I will attempt to get those to everybody in front of our public meeting on the 10th. And I don't think we should presume to take any action until we have heard what this community has to say. This is a very dramatic change. And I'm very curious to hear what the response will be to to an extra $30 million to some very significant additional costs, social costs in terms of acquisitions for our citizens.
Seeing no more, no more comments, we appreciate your time, gentlemen, and all of the the work continuing with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
We will move back to our regular agenda items here, and that is number three, consider of the report of the Planning Commission. 3.1 is the Avery's Edition Lot Public Hearing, a public hearing to consider a request by Arlene Avery, the owner and Ackerman Surveying and Associates Incorporated, applicant to rezone Avery's Edition Lot 1 from AG Agricultural District to RA Agricultural Residential District. Two recommendations to the City Council to approve the subdivision of property described as outlot 12 and unplanted portion of southwest quarter and southeast quarter, section 32, Township 155 North, Range 82 West, Ward County, to create a one lot subdivision to be known and is Avery's Edition Lot 1. The second recommendation is the City Council pass an ordinance on first reading to change zone from AG to RA on the Avery Edition Lot 1. Again, this is a public hearing, an opportunity for anyone in the public, in the audience, to speak in favor or against the item that is before us for this public hearing. One more time, this is an opportunity for public, in a public hearing, to speak in favor or opposed to the item that is before us. Seeing none, I would look for a motion from the council. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser to close the public hearing and move the item. Second by Alderman Olson, discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Simma.
Yes. Motion is passed. Item number 3.2 is the Ramstead Heights Fifth Edition Public Hearing, a public hearing to consider a request by Bach &amp; Development Group, Minot One LLC owner and Ackerman Surveying and Associates Incorporated, the applicant to rezone the Ramstead Heights Fifth Edition from R4 Planned Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District with small lot flexibility. Two recommendations to recommend the City Council approve the subdivision of property described as lots 10A through 18B Block 6, Statesboro Edition and the vacated portion of Kodiak Street Northwest to create a nine lot subdivision to be known as Ramstead Heights Fifth Edition. Second recommendation is that the City Council pass the ordinance on the first reading to change the zones from R4 to R1S with small lot flexibility. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to speak in favor or opposed to the item that is before us for the Ramstead Heights Fifth Edition. One more time, opportunity at this public hearing to speak in favor or opposed to the Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Mayor, move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to close the public hearing and move the item. Second by Alderman Janser, any discussion on the motion? Alderman Wolski.
Brief comment, Mr. Mayor. Kind of a renewed request for for our planning department as, Mr. Billingsley, as you get a better handle on everything that we're doing, I would love to be able to see a financial analysis of a tax impact to these particular changes as they come across. We are, we are essentially reducing the number of lots. My assumption is that that would increase, change the revenue model for this particular development in some form. I don't know whether it would be an increase or a decrease, but but I think that would be valuable information as we contemplate these types of changes in the future, and then in particular, when we're looking at something like a new development where we're going to have upfront infrastructure costs. I fully support this item. I trust our developer to to know what the market will bear, and and the sooner we get these lots built out, the more revenue we're going to be collecting from them. But but I think this is all part of our long-term planning picture, so.
Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Simma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3.3, the last item on the Planning Commission's agenda area, is a public hearing to consider a request by Bach &amp; Development Minot, Group Minot One LLC owner and Ackerman Surveying and Associates Incorporated, the applicant to rezone the Ramstead Heights Sixth Edition from R4, the planned residential district, to R1S, the single family residential district with small lot flexibility. The two recommendations to the City Council approve the subdivision of property described as lots 1A through 9B, Statesboro Edition, to create nine lot subdivision to be known as the Ramstead Heights Sixth Edition, and recommendation of the City Council pass an ordinance on first reading to change the zone from R4 to the R1S. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to speak in favor or opposition to the item before us. One more time, a public hearing for anyone to speak in favor or opposed to the item that is before us with the Ramstead Heights Sixth Edition. Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson.
I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
A motion by Alderman Olson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman straight, discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Simma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion is approved, that takes us to the consent items, that is 4.1 through 4.12. Are there any items that need to be pulled individually? Alderman Wolski.
411 and 412.
411 and 412 are going to be pulled. Any others that need to be pulled for individual discussion? And for consideration, one more time, 4.6 has been withdrawn as indicated on the agendas. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move consent on the remaining items.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser, and a second by Alderman Pittner, consent on the remaining items as recommended. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolski.
Yes.
Simma.
Yes. Motion is approved, 4.4.11 is the Ward County Hazard Mitigation Plan Annual Progress Report. In 2013, the Ward County North Dakota Hazard Mitigation Plan, also known as the PLAN, was prepared by 12 local jurisdictions incorporated into Ward County. The PLAN was updated in 2018 and was approved by FEMA. To maintain the effectiveness of the plan, a yearly evaluation report is used as a method of monitoring the plan. In addition, a yearly recertification of the city's CRS program is required, and this will be the city's third recertification of the program. Two recommendations to the council is receive the file, receive and file the Hazard Mitigation Plan's annual progress report. Number two is authorize the mayor to sign the CRS annual certification form.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Janser.
Second.
Second for Alderman Olson for approval. Discussion, Alderman Wolski.
Yeah, Mayor Simma, thank you. Simple request attached to this item. It has been a while since I've heard an update on our flood insurance circumstances and the recertification of maps. This is, I think, directly related to a lot of that work, so I wanted to put it on the record that I think it's time for an update on, in terms of our our timeframes and our updated firm maps and those types of things. So fully support this item, but I think there's cause for for more information. Thanks a lot.
You're in luck, Alderman Wolski. We had that in the works for the next meeting, City Engineer, Mr. Lance Meyer.
Well, that was timely because at the end of the meeting, I'm going to give you an update, and then we'll also have some more information at the next meeting, so right on track.
Fantastic. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
No.
Wolski.
No.
Simma.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 4.12 on our agenda is the City Hall Retaining Wall, approve plans and specification calls for bids, 4398. In August 2019, council authorized the engineering department to complete the design of replacement retaining walls for walls 1 and 2 around the City Hall complex. The design is now complete and the project is ready for bid advertisement. Recommendation to City Council is to approve the plan and specifications for the City Hall retaining wall and authorize call for bids.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Alderman Olson, or I'm sorry, Alderman Wolski, you asked to have this pulled.
I did. I have opposed this in the past, and I just wanted to pull it for opposition.
Okay. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
No.
Wolski.
No.
Simma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion is approved, the action item section of our agenda, 5.1, the timeline assuring all CDBG NDR funds spent by September 30th, 2022. The federal statutory deadline for all CDBG NDR funds to be spent is September 30th of 2022. A point has been reached where it is prudent to establish a timeline to be followed as benchmarks and corrective action points if necessary to assure that all the funds are spent. The recommendation to City Council is to accept the CDBG NDR timeline serving as the activity benchmark to assure all funds are spent by the statutory requirement of September 30th of 2022.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser, discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Simma, thank you. I think in light of our flood protection presentation, we need to explore the potential of a substantial amendment to, and that would involve repurposing more dollars towards acquisitions. I don't know what the viability of that, obviously, we have a timeline here and we a, an exercise that I would request of our staff and an item that I would like to see brought to us in the future to ensure that the council is considering the most prioritized uses of these dollars.
Alderman Wolfski, do you have a suggestion or directive on what proposed activity that that might include diverting funds from?
I do not have a particular suggestion, Mr. Mayor. We've got a number of activities. I think we have some that are probably going better than others, and we have certain activities that are scored higher than others, so there are areas where I think we can assume or presume that HUD might be more amenable to this type of proposal, but I think this is something that the council needs to contemplate.
Mr. Zakiyan?
Mayor, Sitma, Alderman Wolfski, first of all, in regards to the points made by Alderman Wolfski, the timeline before you allows for that. We can take into consideration changes in the landscape. For full disclosure, I have had discussions with both Ryan Ackerman and Dan Johnson regarding the potential for this change, so we have been in sync. We are aware of it. As we stand here tonight, we do not have funding currently available, either state funding or NDR funding, to do any additional acquisitions as may be contemplated. However, there is flexibility. As you've heard me often say, there are several ways to do a substantial amendment. In the NDR grant, there's a little difference in more flexibility, which is not applicable to allocations 1 and 2. In the NDR grant, before a substantial amendment is triggered, we have the ability to move 10% of the total funds. So in effect, we have the ability to move $7.4 million, as long as we're not creating a new activity, new beneficiaries, or a change in national objectives. So if we were to find the need to do this, we would be looking at a technical amendment as we stand here today. Now, if we had to move money around for other reasons, then we might need a substantial, but as we stand here today, it would be a technical amendment, which would take five days.
Mr. Zakiyan, to this point, and I don't want to get too far away from our item here, and I think we're still within bounds, do we have an approximation of how many dollars have been moved within activities to this point?
Mayor Sitma, good question. Ballpark, $500,000. And that's been purely to, that's been internal. We've moved some money from relocation to acquisition, so it's been internal to that core part.
Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, you've repeatedly told us that we're kind of the golden child of this NDR project. Is there a method within the discussion of the plan of national disaster resiliency that we could ask for a larger increase than just 10%? Is there a method where we could actually ask for that instead of just relying on 10%?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Straight, well, you could never, I would never say to you it would never be done, but this is a rule, hard and fast, for all 13 NDR grantees. It would require a waiver. I think we've kind of been very successful, kind of pushed the envelope as far as we can on HUD granting us waivers because we have been thinking outside the box. I will tell you that, to put in context, I don't, honestly, I don't think there would be much chance of doing that because, under the rules for allocation 1 and 2 and for all the other CDBG DR grants, it's $1 million. If you want to move more than $1 million, you have to get a substantial amendment. So we're at $7.4 million, so that's significantly above the norm.
Thanks, John. I think it might be a plausible exercise for perhaps the council, and I don't know if this would be a special, special meeting, seeing as this is a very big issue, big topic, to formulate some ideas if the council, in fact, is looking at a proposed shifting of those dollars in lieu of that. I think it might be very well worth a special meeting, if nothing else, for discussion in the very near future, given these timelines, and I appreciate the guidance on that, John, and I think it's, I think it'd be very prudent for this body to have that discussion in the near future. Alderman Wolfski?
Mayor Sitma, thank you. You know, maybe some further clarification for my thinking and this particular request is, we just heard our flood protection bill go up by $30 million. Somewhere inside of that chunk is a significant amount of acquisition costs. We've already shifted approximately $500,000 of our available $7.4. Do we have $6.9 million worth of acquisitions in our proposed new flood protection MI5? Or do we have $15 million worth of proposed new acquisitions inside of MI5? So this is the type of information that I would like to have available as I contemplate our MI5 decision, as I contemplate our NDR activities, and all of these associated, intermingled and connected projects.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfski, and I'm going to look at Dan and Ryan in case I say something wrong, but based on what you saw, some of those properties we actually cannot acquire. Thank you. Some of those properties are actually going to be out of the city limits, and as you know, the NDR rules do not allow us to spend any money outside the city limits. So I appreciate what you're saying, Alderman Wolfski, but in terms of the city contribution and the potential impact to the city, it's much less than $6 million, but it is not insignificant, but it's not something that we can't necessarily absorb. Picking up on what Mayor Sitma suggested, keep in mind two things. One is, we are currently actively engaged in acquisitions, and we believe we have allocated all the money. It could be, as we continue to track, that we won't need all the money. I don't envision us needing more money than we currently have available state and NDR funds for all the current acquisitions we're actively involved in. It could be that we will not have to spend all that money, in which case we will have some flexibility. We also aren't sure until we move to a point where, in fairness to the city and the board, the Service River Joint Board, they make a decision with your concurrence on which route to take. We're not going to be clear on the exact, actual costs that are going to be necessary, and that's going to be a time factor, too. So there could be more discussion, but from a timeline standpoint, again, the purpose of why I'm up here today, we're still well within acceptable timelines to have to make decisions. We do not currently have a proverbial gun to our head to have to make decisions tomorrow. I wanted to get this before you and also before the city staff to understand that we really are at the point in time where we need to begin to seriously look at that window getting closer and closer and having to spend all the money, and these are benchmarks that reasonably can expect us to continue that goal and still give us flexibility for any decisions you all may have to make going forward.
Thank you, John. I think prudence, as well as we do come up on decisions regarding some of those activities, we should be well committed to where those activity dollars are going. So absolutely, I think this discussion should happen. Alderman Padugula?
I just wanted to compliment you, John, and other city staff involved in giving us this timeline. I think it makes it much easier to make good decisions if we have an idea of when we need to make them by to be able to spend our money in a wise manner. You know, this is the way government should operate, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Zakiyan or further discussion? Thank you, John. Further discussion on the motion? Alderman Straight?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would like to see you call a special meeting to have that discussion sooner rather than later?
Absolutely.
Please, sir.
That is, that will be on the agenda.
Thank you.
Seeing no more discussion, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 5.2, the City of Minot Community Engagement Strategy. At the December 16, the city council meeting staff presented the council with a draft of the City of Minot Community Engagement Strategy. Council was given time to review the document and provided feedback. Recommendation to city council is to adopt the Community Engagement Strategy.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Pittma?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 5.3 is the engineering study for the Region 8 sign replacements. In order to sustain a minimum sign retroflectivity requirements set forth by the Federal Highway Administration, City of Minot Traffic Department has had a policy to replace all traffic control-related signs in a 10-year rotation. The 2020 sign region replacement area is Region 8, which has a combination of both yield and stop-controlled intersections. Since the existing yield signs are going to be replaced with the region replacement program, the traffic department studied each location to determine if the existing yield controls was both safe and complied with the city ordinance, or if a change to stop-controlled should be recommended. Analysis is consistent with the applying of the AAS HTOs guidelines for the intersection's site triangles per City of Minot Ordinance 28-13. The recommendation to city council is to pass the attached ordinance modifying the approach from the yield control to stop control with the Region 8 sign replacement area. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve. Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 5.4 is 4511, the ND DOT Urban Road Program Submittal for '21 through '24. Yearly, the ND DOT requests projects funded by the federal funds to be submitted for programming into the Five-Year Statewide Transportation Improvement Plan, or the STIP. 31st Avenue Southwest, which will be constructed in 2020, is the last city of Minot Urban Road project in the ND DOT STIP. The engineering department is proposing two projects for council consideration, and if approved, will be submitted to the ND DOT by the February deadline. Recommendation, council, is to approve the list priority of the projects for submittal to the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Motion by Alderman Janser for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 5.5, this one is a little bit lengthy, so please stay with me. The ground agreement, Minot Aviation update on the negotiation staff recommendations. Minot Aviation, also known as the Airport Hobby Shop, leased real estate from the Minot International Airport. The city council elected not to renew their lease at their August 5 meeting, and the city attorney office mailed notification of the city's election to not renew the lease to the Minot Aviation and their attorney on August 9, 2019. The lease will terminate January 31 of this year, 2020. On December 13, 2020, the city staff received a proposed concurrent use agreement and ground lease from the Minot Aviation and Airport Hobby Shop attorney, Robert Martin. Their proposed lease agreement proposes the following. Number one, the Airport Hobby Shop is added as a party in the agreement, while the prior agreement was only between the Minot Aviation and the City of Minot. Number two, the agreement has a base term of 12 months and gives the leases option to renew on an annual basis. Number three, rent during the base term will be 40 cents square foot per annum, and total square footage on the premise is 10,000 square feet for a total of $4,000 a year. Rental rates on the renewal option must be negotiated prior to each renewal. A, in addition to the rental rate base upon the square footage, the Airport Hobby Shop will also pay a sales commission to the city in the amount of 2% on their gross revenues each month. City staff finds these lease terms to be reasonable and a higher, better use for the property than in the past. The recommendation is that the city council consider accepting these essential terms, allowing the city staff to draft an agreement memorizing these essential terms and authorize the mayor to enter into a concurrent use ground agreement. The four recommendations to council, the city staff recommend that council authorize the city staff to accept the essential terms of the contract as set forth in the memo, and two, direct city staff to draft an agreement memorizing these essential terms, and three, pending regulatory approval, authorize the execution of a concurrent use ground agreement, and four, authorize the mayor to sign any applicable documentation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Pittner for approval on the recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Straight. Discussion on the motion. Should we start with our city attorney first for a little direction?
Mr. Mayor, just for the council's awareness, the lease agreement has been finalized by the city and the tenant. However, we're still waiting for FAA approval, and the signed final version pending approval is on the council's agenda online that was just added this afternoon, so we have the final agreement on it.
The final agreement is on hand. So the only remaining item is number three, then, the regulatory approval. Okay.
And this body's approval.
And this body's approval. Alderman Wolfski, you had a question?
Yeah, two questions. I think our city attorney spoke to one of them, which was, is this, is this idea was contemplated early on and previous actions were taken by council? It was FAA concerns that were raised in terms of whether the aeronautical activity, but it seems we've gotten past that hurdle.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Wolfski, yes, we've worked through that issue with the tenants, and there's also language in the lease that speaks to the airport director weighing in on ensuring that that aeronautical purpose is met, and I'm not sure if Mr. Felton wants to speak more to that or not.
My second question may be more general on leases as a whole. Do we have a mechanism to provide or consider some sort of escalator? Obviously, if we're renewing on an annual basis, and this gets renewed for 10 years, the terms that we're essentially approving today might not be appropriate three years or six years or nine years into the future.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Wolfski, in the terms of the lease, there is language that speaks to that on when the tenant opts to renew the lease again, there has to be a negotiation of the rent terms.
Further questions for our city attorney or comments? Again, the motion is to approve with the four items that are recommended before us. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 5.6 on our agenda is the 2020-2024 Capital Improvement Plan Adoption, 4499. In 2019, the city staff developed a new capital improvement plan known as the CIP process. The new process added a significant amount of detail for each project in an effort to be more transparent. Staff has continued this process in developing the 2020-2024 CIP. No action is required at this time. The City Council may review the capital improvement plan and provide feedback to the city engineer by January 24 of 2020 of this year, just a few days from now, as we're keeping track here. CIP will be presented to the council at the February 3, 2020, meeting for final approval. Is there any questions of our city engineer or discussion on the matter before us? Mr. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments. Like you had mentioned, we followed almost the exact same processes before. We did solicit any project ideas from Alderman this year, and included those in our capital improvement plan. Again, it's very large, very ambitious, about $422 million, which is $10 million more than the previous five-year CIP. And again, a lot of that cost is being driven by two of our largest projects, flood control and NAS. We also have several large projects in there, like City Hall, and some road reconstructions that are quite expensive. So it doesn't take very long to drive those numbers up pretty high. Overall, I think all the departments submitted very good projects. They're all very feasible. It's just a matter of allocating the funding necessary to pay for those over time. So like you had mentioned, Mr. Mayor, if Alderman or the public have any comments, questions, please send those our way. If adjustments need to be made, if you think there's some changes in project phasing that you would like to see, let us know. We put an end date on it, only because if we had to do some math and recalculation, we have some time to do that, and then present it to you for the next memo cycle in the February 3 meeting.
Thank you, Lance. And for the publics that might be watching or listening online or at home, the CIP plan draft is attached to the packet that they can click on for the PDF. It is quite extensive, but it is there for review three more days, then, or reach out to one of the Aldermen. Alderman Wolski, you had a question or a comment?
I know you were looking at me, Mr. Mayor, so.
I'm sorry, Alderman Straight.
It's all right.
I apologize.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the team's hard work in providing this. I have to admit that currently, I'm sitting here seething over the railroad, and I'm not going to lie, that we have some projects that are near and dear to our hearts, that are a large attribute of the historical significance that the railroad has played in town, and we're trying to figure out a way to fund, you know, what is a pedestrian crosswalk over the river. And I'm going to be fairly vocal moving forward that I'm not beneath public shaming to try to figure out a way to get our dance partner to pay for some of those costs, because I'm just going to continue to be seething as we move forward, because it puts us in some terrible, terrible positions to have to vote on these, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize for saying that publicly now, but these are the emotions that are caused, and when we're talking about $30 million in people's homes, I just want that known.
Thank you, sir. We have to see if BNSF has a grant program available.
Yes.
Any further questions for our city engineer or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Don't go too far, though. That takes us to our personal appearances portion of our agenda. This is number six, personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda for this evening. If you do have anything, please come forward, and if you would, please state your name and your address or affiliation for the record. Good evening, Mr. Moss.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Aaron Moss. I speak tonight in the representation of the North Dakota Fraternal Order of Police, Service Valley Regional Lodge, number seven. I will speak very briefly, just on two topics that were not on the agenda. First, just wanted to put on the record formally that, in this forum, that today marks a rather sad anniversary in the history of the Minot Police Department, and I was asked to speak on behalf of the lodge in this. Today marks the 99th anniversary of our most recent line-of-duty death with the Minot Police Department. Officer Lee S. Fowler was shot, well, attempting to make an arrest of a bootlegger downtown on the 20th of January 1920, and succumbed to his wounds the next day. So I think it's right and appropriate that we acknowledge him publicly, even though it's been nearly a century, and let the public know that his service is not forgotten, and we miss and still remember him. And secondly, I wanted to speak since this is last night, representing the Minot Police Department at one of these meetings. The lodge would just like to congratulate and thank Chief Jason Olson for his leadership, mentorship, and advocacy for his officers, and therefore our members, which constitute the majority of our lodge. So we'll be more in-depth presenting with thanks at his going away, but just wanted to put it on record tonight in this forum as well. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions? Alderman Padugula?
Just a comment on that. I was in New York City this past October, and in wandering around town, I came across a memorial to the public safety personnel, particularly in the police, I think it was a police memorial, actually, who had given their lives for the safety of the citizens of New York, and it was a very unexpected finding of mine. It was right by the river, and it was a very touching memorial. And I'm wondering, hopefully, we won't have too many more of these, but it might be something to look at, a permanent kind of place for people to recollect and give their thanks. I'm not one much for ceremony or things like that, but I was really moved by it, particularly reading the names and the ranks and the dates of loss. Obviously, a lot of them were connected with 9/11. So maybe that'd be something to think about in the future. Like I say, hopefully, we won't have too many, but, you know, even one is worth remembering and memorializing.
Mayor, respond to that, please. Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, in North Dakota, the North Dakota Peace Officers Memorial is on display at the State Capitol next to the Judicial Wing. It has our officers that were lost in the line of duty, here in Minot included, obviously. But certainly something to look into for a local memorial. I would also point out that both firefighters and law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty, not only just within Minot, but in Ward County, is already on display at Fire Station 1.
That's good. Perhaps if we ever get a gathering place, a small plaque might be a suitable additional, more public reminder.
I absolutely agree.
Thank you, Aaron. Once again, this is a personal appearances portion of our agenda. Any person that has any item that they wish to come forward and speak on, this is the opportunity. Seeing none, we will move on to the next portion of our agenda. This is the miscellaneous in discussion. Item 7.1 is under our police chief announcement. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, this is a little bit of old news for you and our community, as the cat got out of the bag early, a couple, a week or so ago, on this. But just for those who haven't been aware, reading the paper, or the internet, or whatnot, we did announce a new police chief, starting on February 1 of this year. Captain John Klug, who's in the audience today, he will take the ranks, filling some very big shoes over our current police chief, who announced his resignation last November, and that allowed us ample time to begin a recruitment process. We did this nationally. In the end, we ended up, over several weeks' time, collecting a number of different names, and narrowed that down to three finalists that we were able to put in front of three different review panels, and I'm pleased to say that, while we had a very good number of candidates, that Captain Klug did rise to the top, and we're grateful for his service and his interest in continuing his career with the City of Minot. We are going to have a ceremony to recognize Chief Olson at the February 3 council, so we have, or I have essentially bent his arm pretty good to try to get him back, since his last day is on the 31st, but he'll be coming back to us, and we'll officially recognize his service, and then we'll also swear in. I think the mayor is going to swear in Captain Klug as our new police chief, so that should be kind of fun. We'll do that near the beginning of the meeting, so it'll be, you know, a little bit more ceremonial than maybe we've done in the past, and we'll say a few good remarks at that point in time about both of them, so I'll just save those remarks till that point in time. Anyway, I just wanted to make that announcement and give everybody in our community formally made aware through the council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom, and congratulations again to our new police chief, and we'll certainly speak more at length about this next week. We will see you back here. That takes us, we've already taken care of 7.1 on our agenda. That takes us to 7.3, or actually, 7.2, which is, I'm sorry, it is 7.3, the recycling discussion and future actions. We have had a tremendous amount of input and discussion for several years now. Our Assistant Public Works Director is here, I guess, with a bit more information and looking, I think, for some direction from council this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So I think what I gathered from the last time I met is, you know, we've been talking about this a lot, but I still don't feel like we've gotten great input from the public as to whether they're for it, against it, so there was talk of maybe some ballot language or some different methods of reaching out to the public. Excuse me, I've been battling a cold for the last week, but I'll try to get through some of this. So I just wanted to bring four options to the table and show you kind of some of the pros and cons of each, and see what your guys' thoughts are. So the four options would be like a citywide ballot, a citywide advisory vote, a statistically valid survey, or then a Survey Monkey poll. So with the city attorney's help, we walked backwards, starting on Election Day, to see what would all have to happen to get this put on the ballot this June. So upfront, we would have to draft all of the recycling program ordinances and put that together, and then you all would have to approve that prior to sending that to the county. So first reading of that would be March 1, second reading would be March 17 of this year, and it would include, you know, it would have all of the rules and regulations of the ordinance set out for the entire recycling program, and then basically, there'd be language included specifying that this ordinance would become effective if ratified by the voters on June 9. So then the City Council would approve ballot language, something to the effect of, shall the city amend its code of ordinances to adopt and implement a recycling program as specified in ordinance number whatever? That would have to be, that would have to happen no later than March 16. The ballot language would have to go to the county no later than April 6, and then the vote on June 9. The important part of this is that that entire ordinance would have to be available to the general public, and it would really need to be explained to them. It could be a pretty complex document. It's going to have a lot of moving parts to it. It's going to have some of the costs in it, so to make sure that before people are checking a box for a yes or no, that they understand what they're voting on. So some of the concerns that we have with that type of outreach to the public, we have about 34,000 voting-age people in the City of Minot that would decide the fate of a program that affects about 12,700 households. So you have thousands of people that live in apartments, multifamily units, trailer parks, that are able to vote on a program that they can't participate in, and it won't affect them, you know, as utility-wise or anything. Like I said before, the city ordinance for recycling will be a complex document, and that has to be boiled down to a yes or no answer, and that could be difficult. If approved, then program modifications could be kind of contentious. People expect that once I approve something, that I don't expect it to change shortly thereafter, so just something to consider, and then that decision would, of course, be binding. An advisory vote is much more simple. Basically, just get a simple question put together. Are you in favor of the city implementing a recycling program? And then approval of that no later than March 16. That language to the county auditor no later than April 6, and then the vote on June 9. So we've talked a little bit about the statistically valid survey. So like I said before, this is probably in the neighborhood of about an $8,000 project to get a firm on board that would basically do random phone calls. For our size population, it would be just under about 400 responses that would be needed to get a 95% confidence level in the survey. I guess the benefit of this type of survey is you can ask more than one question and get more specific feedback from the public, you know? Maybe there's a level of interest in recycling at $2 a month, but not at $3 or $4 a month. We can find those levels of where that interest kind of starts to slip away. And then we're able to survey only those people that utilize city sanitation services, which is a pretty important thing. Then lastly, we still have Survey Monkey, which is, it's a free service, so that's always great. We can filter out non-users. We have a database of all of our current customers, and we can filter those out, either through different questions that we ask in the survey. We can prohibit multiple responses from a single IP to prevent ballot stuffing. We're able to ask a variety of questions and gain feedback on, you know, even our current program, you know, since automation has been in the works now for over two years, how people feel about that, and just gain some additional information on what people feel about sanitation service, on top of whether or not they're in favor of a recycling program or not. Now, like I said at the bottom, at this point, I don't, any data that we get, I don't find as being bad. I think, like I showed in the cost analysis last time, there's a certain number of participants that we're going to need to make the program feasible going forward, you know, and it's probably right around that 4,000 people mark, so we don't want to implement a program if just about everybody wants to opt out of it initially. So the more people, the more information we get at this point to find out that if we're going to have a program that has enough participation, that it's feasible going forward, then it's great information to have. And from there, I'll make it brief and leave it to you guys for questions.
Thank you, Jason. Questions for our Assistant Public Works Director? Alderman Pittner?
Jason, just real quickly, on the third option you gave of going with an outside firm to conduct a survey, how do they, where do they get their phone numbers from? What database? Just public record, or is it landlines? They go through the phone book? Do you know?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Pittner, I'm not fully aware. I guess if anybody has any information based on like the One Brand survey that was done, it would be similar to that.
Alderman Janser?
Just to maybe comment on that, I did participate in the presentation, the debriefing on the One Brand survey, and they indicated that they used various sources, and they did have both landline phones that were called, as well as cell phone numbers that were called. And then, of course, in this case, obviously, the qualifying question that you alluded to of, you know, do you receive your garbage pickup from the City of Minot? And then you get to folks who, you know, would, if they say, no, I'm in an apartment, then they don't qualify to proceed. So it does kind of get to the folks that actually we want to get surveyed. So to me, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to continue, to me, it seems like, for the reasons cited in the presentation, the options 1 and 2, the ballot questions, have flaws for various reasons, and I guess I'm uncomfortable with the fourth option as well, because you get information, I'm not sure I agree with your final statement, Jason, just because you get information, but it's information from folks who, you know, may or may not even have a stake in the thing, potentially, I guess. So, you know, in order to move this thing forward, because we've, you know, we've kind of wrestled with it, I guess I would make a motion that we proceed with the statistically valid survey option.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Janser on moving the statistical analysis survey, and a second by Alderman Olson. Discussion, Alderman Straight?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just piggyback and add an amendment to this, that is, I think, pressing and also part of the conversation, Ms. Beeler walked in, and I would like, Mr. Mayor, to ask you for authorization to maybe allow a small working group, Mr. Sorensen included, I'd be willing to participate, to look at a possible partnership with Calix. There's currently a facility there. We've allocated, Mr. Lakefield and I talked about it today, there's $760,000 that Alderman Olson chaired for the last round of Community Facilities Fund. If there's an avenue where we can continue a service without having to start fresh, I think that that is a desirable option right now, sir, and I think that we need to investigate that, as well as move forward with the single-stream recycling conversation within the community. But I think that we cannot, or we should not, lose the opportunity of working with Calix. Their experience, their knowledge, I think, would benefit us, and if there's an avenue to proceed with a partnership, sir, I think that I would like to ask you if we can have some type of working group to look into that, to bring back some, while we also vet out the survey options, sir.
Second that. So there's a motion to amend that would include a working group, and I'm trying to discern whether or not that we're appointing a committee here, which is what the amendment includes. Is the second clear on that? Okay. We have a motion to amend, a second by Alderman Padugula, on everything that Alderman Straight just elaborated on, on a deeper dive into potential collaboration with the Calix group. Discussion. City Manager Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure the staff is clear on what's being intended here.
I just want to make sure the staff is clear on what's being intended here. Because you'll have to vote on the amendment separately and then you'll have to somehow tie the amendment to the work of this survey and when does the survey work happen? Is it in concert with, I mean, those, those things aren't really clear. Are we, are we expecting this committee to, which will be a public, essentially a public committee, to do its work first and then, then we do the survey? Or do the survey happen at the same time the committee's going? Or is the committee making a recommendation that's going to inform the survey? I guess, we, we don't want to get that wrong, but I think it's important because it's a pretty sensitive issue for a lot in our community.
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I, I chimed in because I didn't want to lose the opportunity and all too often we, we move, we vote, and then we move on and, and I feared that we would not have this. I'd be willing to pull my amendment if you, sir, would then allow a subsequent discussion about the Calix services that are currently offered and how the city of Minot could possibly continue with an element of that moving forward.
Alderman Janser.
I, I appreciate Alderman Straight's amendment, but I, and I guess, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to argue for my original motion simply from this, from this standpoint. I think we, I think we have all had input from people on both sides of this issue. And, and the community, you know, is a little, is a, the, the input is polarized, a lot of it. Meaning there are people who say, you know, recycling is not something I'm going to participate in. I don't want it and I don't want to pay anything to do it and I don't want to see anything on my bill that is associated with it. And then you have other people who are essentially saying recycling is essential and we need to be doing it and it doesn't even matter what the cost is, I'll pay it. And that's a long ways apart. And I don't have any way to know how many people there are in the community that feel one way or the other. Because anecdotally, you know, you run into both on a constant basis. And so the reason I made the motion for the survey is that I think that will give us some insight into a statistically valid picture of where, where people are at on this. And I'm certainly not against the initiative that Alderman Straight is talking about in his amendment. I think, I think that would, would be great. So that, that's my position at least.
So we do have a motion to amend with a second in the formation of a separate committee looking for a little bit of a timeframe. Alderman Straight, to, to the answer to your question, I can appreciate very substantially the, the, the want for the deeper dive into the Calix partner, potential partnership. I think my personal discussions with Ms. Beeler and, and many others in the community, I think that there's a good number that would like to see that continue. However, I continue to look back at a lot of the information that's been given to us by the industry, industry officials as well as our public, Assistant Public Works Director on what makes successful recycling, what's most affordable and, and what's going to, I think, best serve the community. I'm hesitant to create, I guess, a committee that coincides with the statistical analysis for that reason. I, I, it's not that I don't disagree with it, it's essentially just looking at what is going to be the, if it is going to move forward, what is going to be the easiest, the most cost-effective, and I think the most agreeable to, I think, some folks that may be on the fence or, you know, just don't care either way or are just adamantly against it. I don't know if that's what you're looking for, Alderman Straight, but there is my analysis of the situation. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess before we hear from the gentleman, I, I just wanted to point out that all too often we're creating something new that costs additional dollars. Here we have a partner in town, yeah, it might not be the ideal transfer facility, but we have $760,000 to possibly create something new. I don't see a rationale of why we should create something new when there's something that already exists. I think we all agree that we want to support the Calix mission. And I think too often we're, we're focused on the taxpayers that own homes. And to Alderman Janser's point, I, I can appreciate that the, the survey question can be muddy, but we have a lot of people that can't afford homes, that want to recycle, that live in apartment complexes, that want to physically, are willing to take it and drop it off at Calix. And if we have that rightly available, that's also protected. Jason and I talked about this earlier today where, you know, we've tried to look at that before, drop-off sites and some of that. So what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is that, that's not close ourselves ops, off to the, the menu of options and assets that are currently there just by plugging ahead with the one question that is trying to gain more data. When we have an existing program that's already in the community, yeah, there's financial questions that have to be addressed, but I just think that we're crazy if we don't at least investigate that while we're flushing out data-related questions that are going to take time anyway. So that's just my, my overall premise, Mr. Mayor, of why I think it's important to, to look at that.
Give me with your name, address for the record, please.
My name is Brad Magnuson. I'm the chairman of the North Dakota Renewable Energy Caucus. And it's always been our position that recycling should be implemented across the board throughout Minot regardless of whether or not if you live in an apartment building or a trailer park or a condo or whatever, or wherever you live. Because of the fact that not only will it cut down on your garbage fill, but it will also cut down on the amount of landfill space that we have and it will reduce the need to expand the space in the landfill. And it'll just, it'll save money straight across the board.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, just my thoughts, wanted to weigh in on this. I, I, and I mean no disrespect, but I, I feel like we're making a mountain out of a molehill. I think it's just a cart before the horse kind of thing. I think we can move forward with the original motion and, and then incorporate the discussion of Calix and, and, and a partnership after that point. Let's, let's get the barometer of where the public truly feels like, Alderman Janser had said, it's, it's very polar, polarizing. We, we never get an email or a phone call saying, ah, I could care less. I mean, it's usually one way or the other. So I, I, I support the original motion. I think, and I think Alderman Straight, and I appreciate and I agree with you that having that discussion and maybe partnership and, and co-op in with Calix, if they're interested or having that discussion, but after the fact, I don't think, I don't think these two things need to be tied together necessarily, but just my thoughts.
Further discussion, Alderman Padugula.
My sentiment is to try to retain a resource that's been very valuable for the community in many ways, not just in terms of recycling or perhaps we should call it waste stream management, but also in terms of helping people with developmental disabilities. And this organization's been around for many years. They unfortunately won't be doing their main mission of recycling after the end of the month. And to me, it'd be, seem important, desirable to try to hang on to something that's been very good and served the community very well. I don't see this as an either or kind of choice. I have no problems with getting some more information and I think, you know, Mark's idea of, of a scientifically valid survey is probably worth the, the money at this point, again, because of the polarization and our need to assure that there's an adequate number of people who would participate, so we don't lose too much money on it. But I'm also very concerned, again, about losing a resource, a very valuable resource in the community and just having it drift away. So I, I would be supporting the amendment.
It's not often I, I task pulling someone in the audience up to the podium, but Ms. Beeler, I know, I can't help but notice you're in the audience. If you could, do you have any input on, I guess regarding future endeavors or possible collaboration to what Alderman Straight had kind of alluded to regarding, and also Alder, Alderman Padugula with the, the folks with disabilities is, we've had numerous discussions between you and the council over some period of time now.
Yeah, Mayor Seppa and the council. First, I have to say that I really appreciate the sentiment that, that I'm hearing about, about Calix. And as, as you know, we, we're in the recycling business for 25 years now and it's, it's gratifying to know that the public is sad to see that end. That said, I, I don't really have any answers for the future. Recycling is in a very challenging situation right now. The discussions that I've heard from the city for, I don't know, what has it been now? Two, three, four years about the path that the city wants to go is different from our mo- business model and, and we've, we've kind of talked through all that, that there isn't really any way to, to marry those, two of those together. If the city wanted to completely change direction and do something differently, we're certainly willing to, to talk about that. But I, the, the market is very challenging, the industry's very challenging and I, I can't give you any quick answers as far as, okay, we should do this or that. All I can really say is, is that I'm willing to discuss ideas.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Beeler, at the end of the month, once the program goes away, time passes, we're waiting for some survey data, how, how willing would Calix be to come back to the table to say, yeah, we would consider a, a partnership or rebooting, say, in six months from now?
Anybody that's ever run a business knows that once you make a decision and move forward, it gets more, harder and harder to change direction again. E- e- even today, it would be a lot more difficult to make a change than it would have been two, three, or six months ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for Ms. Beeler? Again, I apologize for calling you up, being in the audience, but I would appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Alderman Olson, did you have a comment?
Well, I was kind of going back to the city manager's question as far as a timeline and we are considering a survey, it will have to be, the survey will have to be given by a company that does that for a business or, you know, they, they have the expertise in doing that. Are we looking at two months, three months, six months? How long will it take before we can have that survey out and get the information back to us?
With that, perhaps our Assistant Public Works Director, Jason, do you have an estimated timeframe?
Mayor Seppa, Alderman Olson, I, I think that could be a relatively, I, I guess, I don't know how long the actual survey takes, but I guess my plan from here would be to basically write up a, a quick scope of work and get some firms that are, that do that type of thing interested, get a, get a scope of work and a price and then bring that back to you all for approval. And that could happen, you know, probably within the next month. And then at that point, I guess I could give you a timeline. I, I don't know, I don't know how long those surveys take, take to operate.
Thank you, Jason. Further discussion on the amendment, Alderman Wolski.
Mr. Mayor, what I hear is we have one month to have a conversation with Ms. Beeler and, and, and see what it looks like, if it looks like. We've heard very directly that, that every day that passes, the decision to, to offer a different course gets more difficult. So time is of the essence. And so whether the motion passes or the amendment passes or, or not, you know, that particular conversation could, could also be explored somewhat more independently and maybe less formally than a committee setting. I'm going to support the amendment because I, we've got a month, let's use it. Let's, let's hold a meeting and if there's any framework that makes sense and we can figure it out in an hour, then let's try and figure it out. If it doesn't, we've lost an hour. But, so, so I'll reserve my comments to the, to the amendment at this particular point. As, as this larger discussion moves along tonight, I, I have a few other thoughts on, on recycling in general.
Further discussion on the amended, on the motion to amend. Yes, Mr. City Manager, I think we still do need a little bit of clarification on the scope.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I have a, a question because I, I don't want to be confused, but maybe I'd ask this of our Assistant Director of Public Works. The conversation that's being contemplated in the development of this ad hoc public meeting or, or group, have those conversations happened recently or over the last year or 18 months already with Calix representatives? And what in your estimation might be the benefits, if any, depending upon your answer of, of doing this kind of work and how would it inform and help you in giving us additional insights to a program development?
Mayor Seppa, Mr. City Manager, so recently, probably within the last two weeks, Ms. Beeler with Calix has reached out. And one of the things that was brought forward was the potential that they'll have a large facility that's now empty and whether or not that could be retrofitted or somehow used, I guess, in the interim for us to use as a transfer facility. It's been a little while since I've been in that building, but it, I know it has some architectural disadvantages. It doesn't have a big wide open floor plan, so I guess, you know, it, it's, it's where in this process this take forward, you know? I don't need to talk about where my transfer facility is going to be if we're not going to move forward with the recycling program. So it's, we, we could end up having a whole lot of discussion and find out that the public 80, 20, does not want anything to do with recycling and that probably puts an end to all of this. So I guess I, I don't want to chase an idea like this too far down a rabbit hole if, if we're, we're not actually intending on implementing a curbside recycling program. One of the big hurdles, like Ms. Beeler just pointed out, we've been going down the, the direction of single stream, which is still the national trend in, in recycling. And they are not outfitted to handle single stream recycling, they would need source separated. On the other side, if, if we start looking at source separated, we're looking at additional trucks, different trucks from what we currently have and additional crew, it, the programs get more expensive, so.
Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's kind of, I appreciate that, Mr. Sorenson, I, I think that's kind of where I'm going is if, if the council is intent on a single stream, curbside recycling program, as I understand it, Calix cannot accommodate that type of a program. And, and I think that's the question that's before the council now. I mean, because I don't know about having a whole lot more meetings on this to get to that answer, we already know that answer. If the city council wants to modify, as our Assistant Director has mentioned, our approach to recycling and instead get away from curbside recycling and move to drop-off recycling and/or get away from single stream or single source recycling and go to source-separated recycling, then, then maybe there's an opportunity. So I, I think there's some frustration on the staff level that we get directed to sort of guess what the council wants and then we bring back information and, and then we have to guess again and, and I, I think, I think we have to be really clear that what is, what is the program we're talking about? We've presented lots of different program ideas, we've cost-run those, we put performance together and the program that we've settled on, I thought, at the last meeting where this was discussed, was a curbside recycling program with a single stream recycling, you know, content. And, and I think if that's still where you want to go, I, and I'm looking to Ms. Beeler, we're, we're done, right? I mean, there's, there's no more conversation. So I guess I'd put that back to the council. If you have a different idea about how the recycling program for Minot could work or should work, then maybe there's opportunities for discussion. But if that's where we're at, and I thought that's where we were, it makes no sense to me to continue the conversation. Let's get to the statistically valid survey, get this, get us informed as to how many people are going to participate because we know we have to have a minimum number of participants in order to cost, to, to make this cost-effective for us. And if we don't get that through a statistically valid survey, if we get something less than that number, we can bring that to you and say it's not going to work based on the survey. So I guess there's some things there that could be helpful in how we move forward in regards to some past decisions and assumptions of, as to where we got to where we are.
We still do have the motion to amend. Do believe the wit, we are looking at cart before the horse. Alderman Padugula, you have the second on the motion to amend.
I wanted to ask Jason or Tom a question, if we get the results or when we get the results of the survey and if we decide to go forward with, with the recycling, and my understanding is the same as yours, Tom, that we're talking about single stream, curbside. One of the permutations recently has been though, which makes a big difference, is voluntary versus not voluntary. And also the other permutation that's new to us is Calix getting out of the business. And I guess I'm wondering how long it would take if we wanted to go ahead, if we made the decision to go ahead to actually have the recycling program in operation? Because Calix- Because Calix is ending, and I'm wondering, I'm worried about the interim. How long would it take? Do we have any rough idea?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padrigula, if within the next couple of months, if I, if we got the go-ahead to implement a program, I, maybe by the end of 2021, we could, we could go live with it. It would all depend on, you know, we're going to have to site the transfer facility, design it, construct it. That, that all takes time, but I think realistically, late next year, potentially. If not, then it'd be spring of 2022.
So, the community would be without any kind of recycling for almost two years? Thank you.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I heard you last month or three weeks ago, you cited, you know, let's not let perfect be the enemy of good. And City Manager Barry and I have talked about this before, this is an overall concept of managing our waste stream. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do both. Yeah, we've approved $760,000 in the budget two years ago for a transfer facility. I don't see why we couldn't at least engage a conversation with Calix about possibly using a space and possibly getting a better handle of an existing program that would allow residents in the interim to drop off. I guess I'm, all too often, we're trying to create something new when we don't necessarily have to. And I guess I'm frustrated, and I don't think that we necessarily have to conduct another survey. I'm comfortable and confident in voting tonight if we wanted to move forward. I, I don't know, spending more dollars, either way, we're going to upset somebody, but that's what we're tasked to do, Mr. Mayor, and I just think that maybe we should call the question, and, but I just think that we lose a tremendous opportunity that has, we've allocated money for a transfer facility, there's a facility, it's not ideal, it's not perfect, it's close to public works. I just thought it would be an important thing to maybe consider, that would also allow a valuable service to continue. Now, I'm not trying to be difficult, I just, I guess I'm missing something.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. And I probably have to say I feel the same way, like I might be missing something, because I feel like we're talking about the original motion being that we're going to conduct a survey to see if the residents are willing to implement a permanent city program, but then we have a second that's asking if we're okay with having an interim program at a Calix facility. These things are not the same. I think, again, this is a cart before the horse. If we're not even going to go down the recycling road, why are we worried about an interim facility? So, I think we need to worry about the first item, deal with that, and I'm more than willing and more than excited to have the conversation of having an interim program. But I think, I think they're two different, they're two different animals, in my opinion, and I think that's why I think the cart has been put before the horse with this, and to get back on track. I'm more than willing to have a conversation with Calix and to see if there's an interim program that we can provide to citizens as a drop-off facility and operate in that fashion. But again, I think it's prudent that we give staff a direction, and our direction has been a single, single-source, single-stream recycling option that we provide to citizens. And I think that's what we need to get an answer to, if people have a palate for that or not. And then, if they do, then we go to the interim route and see if people want to go that route. If they want something in the interim, well, we get the program up and running if it were to be deemed a viable option. So, again, that's my thoughts.
Alderman Janser.
I guess, I'm thinking that this amendment is to have a meeting. And I guess that I can support. However, the city manager makes a good point that, you know, we've kind of covered that ground. I'm not interested in voting for this amendment if it includes, you know, subsidizing Calix's operation out of money that was set aside for a transfer facility. I'm not interested in supporting this amendment if it is, you know, a commitment to some kind of program that, you know, we don't have any idea of. So, if, you know, if the, if the amendment is really to have some folks get together and sit down and talk about, you know, what might some possibilities be, that's fine. But I think we need to be clear about that, that, you know, we're not, we're not, I mean, there's a reason Calix is getting out of the recycling business, and that is factual, and it's financial. And so, we need to bear that in mind.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson, and then we'll look to Ms. Beeler.
So, one idea that's kind of rolling through my head right now, after listening to Alderman Straight, is I'm prepared to vote on a recycling program tonight as well. I think we have heard a lot of input, we've heard a lot of debate. What I would be more interested in right now is voting on whether or not we are going to pursue a single-stream recycling program with the caveat that we would get the input from our residents on whether we can hit that 4,000 threshold. We're kind of, we're still doing a survey in essence, but we're, we're doing it with the idea that we're moving forward. And if we can get that threshold, then we get the ball rolling so that if recycling truly is something that's going to happen within the city of Minot, we can have it sooner than later. It's not in the form of a motion yet, because I think that's going to mess things up, but that's a thought in my head.
Ms. Beeler.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things if I could.
Please.
I agree with the comments that I've been hearing that there probably isn't a lot of purpose to continue a discussion between the city and Calix if the city is going to stay with a decision of a single-stream program. And it's just simply the way it works. We can't do single-stream, and it would require a major shift for the city to change from single-stream to sorted, and I've never tried to convince anyone to do that, because, I mean, there's valid reasons for the city to just decide on single-stream. So, I think that trying to, to work together to do some kind of interim drop-off that is some sort of hybrid or, it just, it wouldn't work for us to try to do some kind of mix. And I am also hearing some sentiment that the city council is maybe not willing to financially support Calix to continue doing what we are, and we're not willing to continue our current program without some subsidy, because it's losing a drastic amount of money, and that's why we're stopping it. So, if that helps you feel sure of, okay, what your options are and what directions you can go, I just thought I'd offer that.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Beeler. Further discussion on the motion to amend, Alderman Wolski.
Final comment from me, Mr. Mayor, and so I can provide some very explicit clarity here. I do not support single-stream recycling. I think we have a clear example of how recycling works when you get clean, sorted material dropped off for you. And in that environment, it is not financially viable. So, when we add the extra costs of having to pick up at the curb and sort, to me, that equation gets worse. And so, I would like to explore alternative programs, and we have seen lots and lots of data on single-stream programs, and single-stream programs with a MRF, and single-stream programs with two times a month versus four times a month. But the caveat in all of the different information that we have seen is that it's all been single-stream. And I do not believe that that particular model is viable and the right choice for this community. And so, that is why I'm going to support the amendment, because I want one more opportunity to sit down and see if there is any construct that is viable. And I'm, I am open to potentially subsidizing the continued operation of Calix under their current model. And so, I don't want to eliminate anything right now, and these are the pieces that I felt like, that I feel like I have not yet had the full conversation. I think the council's struggling because there's a lot of lack of, I think the city manager's absolutely right, there's an enormous amount of muddiness, lack of clarity. But, final comments.
We have a motion to amend, creating an ad hoc committee on the discussion as described by Alderman Straight, seconded by Alderman Padrigula. Final discussion on the motion to amend. Final discussion. Please call the roll.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Motion fails, four to three. We are back to the original motion of approving the statistical analysis that was proposed as option number two, if I'm remembering correctly. Discussion on the original motion. Alderman Olson.
Only to repeat what I said earlier, I think the information is valid. I think that the information should come after we have decided that we are going to look at a voluntary program. So, the information's good, I would rather see it in a different order.
Alderman Padrigula.
Would my sister alderperson be amenable to a motion to move in that direction then, and just be done with it?
Yes, I will. I think we have to vote on this motion first, but that would be my intent, would be to make a motion if this motion fails.
Okay.
Seeing no more further discussion, we will vote on the motion to approve a survey, statistical analysis survey on recycling within the people that are serviced by the Minot, let's see, serviced by the Minot Public Works Garbage Department. I, sanitation, thank you. It's getting late. Eloquent, I know. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
No.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion failed. Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the city of Minot pursue a voluntary, single-stream, curbside recycling program with the caveat that we can meet the 4,000 participation rate before the program would begin.
Perhaps some clarification on how we meet that threshold?
A survey will have to be part of that, you know, the Public Works would have to conduct a survey in some fashion to find out if we have the support needed.
Second that.
Second by Alderman Padrigula. I would look to Jason as, is that enough lead direction on conducting a survey that would then, if it meets the 4,000 threshold for a voluntary program?
Mayor Sitma, I guess in fear of getting into a situation where I prevent, present data that could come into question, you know, the quickest, dirtiest way would be to gin up a bunch of questions, get out a quick survey monkey poll, you know, ultimately, if we can get five, 6,000 people respond, and there's 4,000 of them that say, let's recycle, like I said, that no data is bad data, and that's, I've got there 4,000 people that say they want to recycle. However, like I said, we, you know, survey monkey results have come under scrutiny in the past, and so, I guess that's why I brought the options back to you, you folks, and what sort of data would you guys be comfortable with?
Alderman Padrigula.
What's the problem with sending out a little card with each water bill?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padrigula, just going off of experience when we went to automated garbage, we sent out basically a postcard to every, every resident and asked them, you know, select your garbage can size. We probably only had about 2,500 people that responded. That can be read one of two ways. Some people looked at the card and said, I don't care what size I have, give me whatever. So, those people, there could be a large group of people that maybe would have weighed in had they cared more. So, it's just, sometimes we have really mixed results when we send stuff out and ask. Generally, when we, when we put some of these questions on, you know, on Facebook or digital media, they really get good attention and a lot of, a lot of hits, so.
City Manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may be alone in my thinking here, but I would, just as a piece of advice for the council to consider, I would be very much against doing a survey monkey poll and basing a two- or $3 million program based on survey monkey results. I just don't think that's responsible. I think you need a statistically valid survey if you want to hit a threshold, that you can stand up if the program fails, if it succeeds or whatever. We've done the pro forma, we know what it says, we have to hit that mark. I don't, I don't want to get into this issue of multiple voting, or who voted that wasn't part of the program, or questioning the data, and what if we're at 4,000 and we don't know what the integrity of the data is? I just, I would caution you to not do that kind of a survey as a decision point for whether you should start a recycling program. Now, maybe you could do that kind of a program to find out, hey, how big of a bin would you like? Okay, maybe that's not that huge of a deal. But to build a two- and $3 million program, two-to-three million dollar program off a survey monkey, I just would not advise that.
Alderman Olson.
I would include that as part of my motion, then, that it be a statistically valid survey.
Does the second agree?
He certainly does. After two years of graduate school, statistics he does.
So, once again, the motion is that to approve a single-stream voluntary recycling program if we can conclude that the 4,000 threshold would be met through a statistically valid survey. I think I've got that right. We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wolski.
There's a, there's a number that's been tossed around here tonight a little bit, and I'm not entirely sure where it's come from, and it's this $4,000 participation rate number. If, if wherever that came from, Jason, you can share that with me, whether you have it off the top of your head, I would, I think I would prefer it, to see that in wherever our documentation on all this has been.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolski, so that was in my last presentation where I laid out the 20-year pro forma. And when you look at the initial part of the program, when participation, I would have to go back and look, I think I assumed a 50% opt-out rate. And when you're, it was larger than that, it was a 60% opt-out rate. So, when you're on that end of the program, the beginning years are the most expensive because you have less people participating, and that number stabilizes kind of around that, around that 4,000 number. It's a, it's a pretty comfortable number.
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just give my thoughts on, I guess, the implementation of this program, and I agree with having the right data to back our decision. But again, we've heard it from some of the individuals that have reached out to us, we've been asked to make these decisions as tough as they may be. We've got more information than, than I can, I could go through in an evening. I mean, we could devote a whole city council meeting to just the information that we got. But I think looking at, from my perspective and my thoughts, looking at the facts that we have, this is going to be a subsidized program, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Calix has, through their actions and their words, shown that we can't make the financials work out. And I personally recycle, but being a steward of the taxpayer dollars that we have been tasked with implementing and a $30 million increase in flood protection, I don't know if now is the time for us to dip our toes in the water. I would love to see a recycling program implemented. I just, I cannot, I, as much as myself as a citizen would love to be able to do that, and I think a lot of other citizens would be, I don't and I think a lot of other citizens would be, I don't know if it's the role of government to make those individuals whole on this particular topic, at this particular juncture, and that's where I'm coming from, just from a financial aspect. It's going to be heavily subsidized, and I just can't, I can't back that using city tax dollars in the recycling market that we find ourselves.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's for Alderman Pitner's statement, it was my rationale all along of why I wanted to partner with Calix, because I know that all of you have looked at the info, you're mindful of it, I don't believe that it's going to pass, as much as I want it to pass, and if it does fail, I do want you, Mr. Mayor, to ask Alderman Olson to chair the community facilities discussion once again, that we would have to reallocate the $766,000 that was going to go towards a transfer facility, and I don't see any reason why, there's an existing program, we believe in Calix, why we wouldn't allocate some of that dollars to Calix to allow the program to move forward, because we're going to subsidize it one way or another. You're either going to pay for it at the end with elevated land purchase agreements, future permitting costs at the landfill. I, morally, ethically, I don't want to ship something to Minneapolis. I'm mindful of the sheer volume of technology that we are just disposing of. There was just another article yesterday that Southeast Asia is like, they're tired of it. I don't know how we can justifiably, and I've stated earlier, sir, that I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good, but if it's a voluntary program, I'm going to support a voluntary program. The people that want to pay for it, if the data is there, we begin somewhere. I believe that as the evolution of recycling and just the country as a whole realizes that we have, we don't have an infinite amount of resources, there's going to be markets for this, there's going to be an evolution for it. But that's why it's important to me to try, in the interim, to carry forward with some partnership with Calix, sir. So, I'm going to support a voluntary program. I can appreciate City Manager's statement, and I appreciate it, Tom, that you're hearing the emotion and the desire, but you're being very steadfast in your role and telling us, you know, we've called into question Survey Monkey, so I appreciate you saying, "Do it statistically, get the best data we can, and then let's move forward."
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. If the monthly $2 or $3 or $4 cost would be enough to cover the 4,000 participants that want to volunteer, if we get to that number, then, you know what, I would be A-OK with that. But the problem with the concept that we have evaluated at this point is that it requires $1 to $2 million worth of reserves that are all of ours to even get that particular concept off the ground. And so, you know, at the end of the day, recycling is five times as expensive to single-sort and haul to Minneapolis as it is to address our waste stream here in Minot locally without putting it on the highway. I realize that is not the most environmentally stewardship-sounding statement, but I think that is the most environmentally responsible action, and so, instead of hauling this stuff to Minneapolis and contributing to a program that, as Alderman Straight said, is still in a significant state of disruption and upheaval as a result of 2018 in China, we've observed the first ripple of that particular action over the last couple of years, which was the deconstruction of the US, or the challenges associated with the American recycling model. But the second wave of that ripple is just coming, as the secondary markets now start, that have been accepting some of this waste for the last couple of years after China said, "No," when they start saying, "No," there's going to be another, there's going to be another round of disruption. And so, I, this is not the right time for us to be speculating with these dollars. I think we need more time for this program, for this concept, for single-stream, if that's the way this country is going to take this problem to sort out, but I don't think it's the right path for Minot right now. That said, I am not comfortable with doing nothing. I think we have a responsibility to be stewards, and so, ultimately, if this vote fails, I will have some ideas at the next meeting of some actions we can take, because saying "No" and stopping the conversation there, to me, is not an option.
Further discussion on the motion. City Manager Barry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to belabor the conversation. I think it's been a good conversation, and there's one question I think is maybe more than just a nuance, but actually important in the way the program would be set up if this motion passes. If it doesn't, then it's a moot point, but I don't know how it's going to go, so I just probably need to say this. The pro forma that was developed and shared with you at the last meeting included program assumptions that were disclosed that you might not recall, but one of them is important that hasn't been discussed, because it does matter going forward whether the pro forma is sustainable even after the 4,000, you know, household count. And that is this issue of this one-time opt-out. You know, we've talked about a volunteer program, which I think we've got a good sense, if the volunteer program says that, you know, 4,000 households are willing to voluntarily accept recycling, we can launch the recycling program. That we feel good about. If that number dwindles over time, the program becomes unsustainable and becomes heavily subsidized, and now we're in a pickle. So, in the pro forma that was developed, we put in a one-time opt-out, which was the volunteer program at the very beginning. You could, at the very beginning, say, "I don't want to participate," and be left alone forever, until you sold your home. And then the next person that came in and bought your home, if they were a City of Minot sanitation customer, would be required at that point to sign up, and that's how we build upon the numbers to keep the program sustainable. That is critical. If you're making a decision tonight based on the motion, as I understand it, to consider a recycling program, I don't want to mislead anyone, I don't want anyone to misunderstand. The volunteer program is volunteer one time at the start, and then it's not volunteer anymore after that, when your house sells, or you know, you have a change or something like that. So, I think we just have to be absolutely clear and transparent about that, because I could see in two years when somebody moves from one side of town to the other, and they say, "Wait a minute, I thought this was a volunteer program, now I'm being forced with recycling, I never wanted it, I didn't have it, I should be grandfathered." That's not how we've contemplated this program. So, maybe some clarification in the motion and the second would be helpful, because the program wouldn't work without that point.
Alderman Olson.
And I agree that I think, I was considering all of that, and I think this first step is really finding out if the support is there. After that, obviously, we're going to have to know an exact number, we're going to have to contact each one of our sanitation customers to know who is going to opt-in or opt-out. So, I think we would get to that point, but initially, we're just looking to see if we're even in that ballpark for support.
And I think Alderman Olson, and maybe it's clarification from my standpoint too on the vote, with the single-stream 4,000 threshold, with that voluntary program, is that, once they sign up, they're always in? Or if the threshold is met, it passes and the vote is done?
I guess my thought on it is, again, we're looking to see if that support is there, but when it's a statistically valid survey, they're not really reaching 4,000 people. I mean, they might, I don't, I'm not a good statistician, even though I did go to grad school, but, you know, maybe they're contacting 500 people or 700 people, I don't know, but I know that they will use the numbers to be able to give us an indication if that support is there. I don't anticipate that they truly are contacting 4,000 households or 5,000 households.
City Manager Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm clear on what you intend, Alderman Olson, so if I could repeat it, just make sure that we're all clear. So, the statistically valid survey is really just information for us to have, to know if we should continue this conversation, and if we do get to 4,000, that look like they would go, you're not saying that we should immediately launch the program.
No.
You're saying, that allows us as a checkpoint, we pass that checkpoint, and we continue, and then we do our own legitimate opt-in, opt-out, not survey, but you're like, you know, I guess it's kind of like a survey until it becomes binding with the ordinance, and it would be that particular data that you would say has to meet the 4,000 threshold in order for us to move forward?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Alderman Straight.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to muddy the waters at all, but I do want to put it on the radar that I think also at that time, it's going to be important that we are looking at the discussion of tipping fees, we're looking at the independent business haulers, and that we are allowing that our facilities would then be able to accommodate them dumping if they created their own recycling programs as well within our transfer facility. Franchise agreements to those, to that effect, sir, I would like that we're, again, we're back to managing the entire stream and having a detailed, thoughtful approach to maximizing and including the apartments and everything else in the programs, sir.
Certainly, discussion as it moves forward. Further discussion on the motion, that is, motion by Alderman Olson, second by Alderman Padrigula. Alderman Olson.
Only one final comment, just so that it does clarify. I think that the purpose of my motion is so that people understand what it is that we are pursuing. I think it's been too broad in the past. Was it voluntary, was it involuntary? At least with this idea, they'll know that it's a voluntary program.
Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
No.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
No.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to our department reports, or am I missing one here?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted some clarification. Now that we've had the vote, and we know what direction we're going to take, as far as the funding source for conducting the survey, I don't believe we have that money budgeted, so we would have to move some money around to accommodate that, and it can either come out of the department's budget. The second thing I have, and I'll have to do some research, is if we can use the community facility funds to do a survey. So, that may be a little bit of a hurdle as well. So...
I think that may be a bigger hurdle with the community facilities fund. Let's take a deeper look into the department's budget to see if we can find those funds there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that.
And we would expect then, something to come back for an amendment if needed in that regard.
Bless you.
Bless you. Thank you. That takes us to department reports. Mr. Meyer, good evening, our city engineer. As I understand, you are back and have changed up your report style from the last time that you were at the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. That's correct, Mr. Mayor. We, we're going to try something new tonight. So, in the past, we've given PowerPoint presentations, and we are going to use something called an Esri story map. So, this is not new technology, but it's new to us, and essentially what these are, it's a, I think it's a better way for us to communicate with the public, it's more interactive, it's taking our data that we have through GIS, and then being able to use that and analyze and talk about it in a setting like this. This presentation's posted on the engineering department's homepage, it's towards the bottom, so after this is done, you can go back to it, you can dive into the data and take a look at it. So, we're, it's, to us, it's exciting stuff, we're right at the very tip of the iceberg. So, with that, we'll get started. This is our team, this is the City of Minot Engineering Department. You know, we're truly blessed at the City of Minot, we have a very good team. Every day, these folks come in, and they want to make their city a better place to be, so we're very fortunate to have them. I'm very fortunate to lead the team, we all gel very well together, and I'm very grateful for that. Who's not pictured, of course, are our traffic maintenance folks, they're in the field making sure signals work and lights are on and signs are fixed, so. Our engineering department is now made up of two divisions, we used to be four. Planning and building inspection are now part of community development, so that leaves us with engineering services, and that's led by Emily Hiddle, our assistant city engineer, and then Stefan Gers is our traffic engineer who leads the traffic division. You know, you primarily work with us three, but Jesse Berg, who's also with us here tonight, he's our project manager, and he helps coordinate all the design and construction of our in-house design projects. So, very fortunate to have these folks and the rest of our team with us. Engineering Services Division oversees dozens and dozens of various tasks, but they generally fall within these primary categories, and those are site plan and stormwater management plan reviews, all the plat approvals that happen after planning commission go through our office, all the ride-away construction permitting and encroachments, we handle those, the design bidding and construction management of our roadway maintenance projects. We also assist the Public Works folks in their utility designs. Our floodplain management and MS4, which is a stormwater compliance program, that all goes through our department. We compile and update the city's capital improvements plan, which you had seen tonight, and we are charged with implementing the city's asset management program, which we're going to spend some time on tonight. It's pretty exciting work that we have in front of us here. In our traffic division, they oversee the operation and maintenance of our 50 traffic signals, 5,800 traffic signs, 750,000 lineal feet of pavement markings, and about 3,100 city or Excel-owned streetlights. They also review and approve all the construction zone signing and detouring in town with construction projects, and we also enforce the intersection view obstruction ordinances. So, you know, all cities have challenges, and we're no different. We're going to be working on a lot of things in 2020 that'll carry us even beyond that. We need a pavement management strategy for our worst streets in town, we need to modernize all of our traffic signals within the city. We're going to be implementing a massive program in this asset management and permitting software, and we need to talk about our revised floodplain maps that are coming. This is some of the data that we are starting to be able to build now that we've leveraged our Esri GIS system. What you're looking at tonight is a series of dashboards that look at our pavement condition index, or PCI, throughout the city. So, right here, this number, 79 and 1/2, that's the current average pavement condition index through the city. When we started this program in 2018, we started right about 80, just a hair under 80. The model showed we should be at a 77 today based on our funding allocations. However, the hard work and ingenuity of our staff has allowed us to tick this up 2 and 1/2 points to 79 and 1/2. So, the pain that we all felt this past summer with roadway under construction, and we'll have some more of that here this coming summer, it was worth it. We did a lot of maintenance on Broadway, and that significantly increased our PCI index because of its classification. At our current funding levels, we're not able to replicate that year after year, but I think by using this data and then applying good, solid pavement management concepts, we are able to slow that degrading of our pavement condition. We maintain 500 and almost 32 lane miles of roadway. Of that, 36.7 lane miles is in poor or worse condition, so a PCI of less than 56. And then here, you can see below the different road classifications that we have and where those PCIs fall. Now, this is the, some of the beauty of this data analysis that we can do, and anybody can do this, we can interact with our maps now, we can zoom into certain areas of town and click on roadway segments and see the data that we have in our asset management programs regarding that. We can see PCI indexes, the ranking of those streets, and that sort of thing. So, very helpful data for us not only to analyze it, but then to give that feedback to you and the citizens. Diving in just a little bit deeper on the PCI stuff, you'll see that on this map, these are all of the roadways in Minot, the block segments, that have a 56 or below. So, why that's important is because we, these streets are now at the point where normal preventative maintenance no longer applies. We can't chip seal them, we can't overlay them, they have to be reconstructed. And so, if you look at the breakdown of that, out of that, remember that almost 37 lane miles, we have 25.6 on local roadways. If you look over here on the data, the cost to reconstruct one lane mile of local roads, so local roads... so local roads are the streets you and I live on, this is a $22 million problem. If you take the other figures here and then do the math, it's pretty expensive. So this is a problem that we're going to need to spend some extra time on and look at ways to adjust our budgets because it's $4.5 million that we receive every year on normal street maintenance. Well, that's a lot. If we take these dollars and try to attack this problem, we'll never make it because we'll get into this death spiral where we'll use up all of our available funding to fix these small block segments instead of using $4.5 million to maybe chip seal a mile of roadway at $26,000 a lane mile versus 860,000. So that's one of the challenges that we're going to have this year. We're going to start putting some data together to help you as council and our citizens understand the different ways that we may be able to attack this problem. Diving into traffic signals a little bit, tonight, you approved the second phase, if you will, of some dollars that are going to start upgrading our traffic signal cabinets and our traffic signal systems. So our goal in the next five years is to implement a ITS system, which stands for intelligent transportation systems. Really what this is, it's being able to take all of our signals, link them together, and then to have them function in concert so that we can move traffic efficiently through the city. If you look at the breakdown, about a little over two-thirds of our system is not, doesn't have that capability to communicate with us back to the office. If you look at the data here, you know, this is the Burdick Expressway corridor. Most of these signals, they have no communication. They are old, they can't communicate, and that's why in 2021, we're going to partner with the DOT to take care of some of this. So these old traffic signal cabinets, they don't just look bad on the outside. If you open one of these cabinets up, you're going to see a lot of equipment from the 1980s. Most of this equipment will predate myself and the majority of the engineering department. Most of this stuff has now come from the city Bismarck scrap pile because we can't find parts for it anymore. No one makes 30-year-old computers that you can swap in and out. So we are left with trying to Band-Aid these together and beg other cities for any spare parts that they may have. In contrast, our new traffic signals, they're modern, we make them look nice wherever we can. And then they do have the ability to communicate back to us through whether it may be Wi-Fi or DSL lines or something. These are ITS ready. So once we connect all of these cabinets together, we'll be able to implement that system. And of course, our signal standards and mass arms, some of them need to be replaced too. You'll notice the screwdriver sticking in the bottom of this one. So this one's getting pretty bad. We better get after that one. But that goes hand in hand with the cabinet replacement. We have to address both issues. Stefan and the team have done an outstanding job at putting a five-year plan together. I don't expect you to read this here, you'll be able to see it online when you look at it, but we've broken the signal systems down into years where we can budget for this and then we include this in the capital improvement plan so that we have a viable way of funding these improvements. And they're set up so that every year, when we do these improvement projects, we can either try to do them in concert with other projects that we have going, like when we do some work on Burdick in 2021, or like tonight, we approved 10 locations throughout the city where we're going to dedicate funds to get this problem solved. What I wanted to really talk about tonight was the big project that we have in front of us. Much like our finance team and others are taking on the ERP project, our side of the house is taking on a project that will change the game, so to speak, on our operations side. It's, for short, we call it our asset management program, but really what it involves is permitting and land development, so all the areas that our community development department undertakes, and then citizen engagement software. And there's some really fascinating things here that I'll go over, but it's really going to change the way that we interact with our citizens, how we communicate, how we get information, how we respond. So the bottom line is we want to provide a better and more efficient service. And we're to the point now in our city's growth where we need better tools. And that's really what this is all about. Just an overview of some of the things that we have to manage, and I should have brought this up here a minute ago, but when Emily started with us here a little over a year ago, I asked her, I said, "Well, what's the biggest difference you see coming from consulting back into, in a public service?" And she told me that, well, you know, when you're a consulting engineer, you manage four or five projects and there's dozens of tasks within those, but that's kind of your focus area. When you work for a municipality, the difference is you manage dozens and dozens of projects that have dozens and dozens of tasks. So it becomes even more critical now to have a system in place where you can get some help trying to manage all that, prioritize that work, so that you're always trying to attack the most pressing needs first. That's where some of these programs come in because it gives us tools to do that. Our public works department maintains over 325 miles of water main, 265 miles of sanitary sewer, 117 miles of storm sewer, and over 10,000 utility work order requests every year. That's incredible. Same thing on our roadways. We talked a little bit about, you know, what we have to maintain there. Again, tens of thousands of work order requests for streets. That might be patching a pothole or fixing a sign or a signal. Our fleet, we, the city shop maintains almost 800 pieces of equipment, processes over 2,500 job orders every year to make sure that equipment runs so that we can get our work done, and 5,000 parts in inventory and hundreds of thousands of gallons of fuel that they have to manage. In our engineering department, you know, obviously, we manage or review lots of different plans, but the big takeaway here is there's 50 infrastructure projects, both public and private, that we have to work through on an annual basis on average. And some of those projects are relatively small in scope. There might only be a few tasks associated with them, or we may have a 31st Avenue reconstruction where it's a, you know, three or four-year-long project and there's literally hundreds of tasks that have to be undertaken during that project. So we need some software to help us manage that work. Inspections, over 3,000 permits, 7,500 inspections, 1,700 plans reviewed and 680 licenses, that's a lot of work for those folks. Our planning department's very busy, of course, with over 50 planning commission items, and each item may take dozens or even hundreds of hours, just depending on how complex it is. There's lots of things to track, conditional use permits that may have conditions that three years from now, we have to check. Well, you can only manage so much of that in your outlook calendar. We need something a little better than that now. And of course, 170 code violations on average that we have to manage in the case files for those that are associated with that work. These are just some pictures of some of the systems that we're working with. They're all, you know, we have hundreds of spreadsheets between the different departments to try to track all this data because that's the best way to organize and keep it straight. Handwritten work orders for everything from, you know, fixing a hydrant to replacing a meter, meter records, tire records. These are all very important piece of information, especially if you're the person in the field trying to find a curb stop under two feet of snow and it's negative 15 degrees. It sure would be nice if we had that information on a tablet, they could click on the parcel and all this information would be at their fingertips. That's what we're trying to get to. And it really, truly is amazing that we've been able to make it this far with some of these systems that we have. This is about a four-minute-long video that we're not going to play tonight, and that's why we posted this online so that you can see it. But the city of Longview, Texas is almost in the exact same position that the city mine is. They've grown to a point where they needed a system that could help them with some of these day-to-day tasks to provide a better service. And that's what we're talking about here. I personally started looking at a system like this probably about four years ago. You know, and there's vendors up and down that you can see, but really, you need a vendor that fits what we're trying to do, and of course, that fits our budget. And I think we found that in City Works and their partners, and then also Asset Works, who will be handling our fleet side. Once we get this project going, next meeting, I plan on bringing you all the contracts for these projects, there'll be about four of them that we have to approve. And after that, it's about an 18 to probably 21-month setup to implement all of this. So it's a very large project. The beauty of the system that we've chosen is it sits right on top of our existing GIS database. We're not replicating anything, we're not trying to recreate the wheel. It sits directly on top of the investment that the city has already made. So our GIS database is the authoritative database for all of the city's billion-dollar assets. So if you click on a pipe, you can see its age, its condition, who worked on it last, costs associated with that. We're able to drill down into that data to help us make better decisions and to allow you to be better informed when we have to set budgets. All of our work orders that I showed you before, those are all replaced now by an online work order system that our field crews can utilize on tablets. They can assign equipment, material, labor to these. We can track costs. That ties back in with our ERP system that we're implementing and also to our fleet management system that we're implementing. So all of those things can be tracked and we can have a better understanding of what we're actually taking on in the field and what those costs are. We have to have dashboards as managers to help us understand what work is going on out there. Where are our trouble spots? Where are we not providing a good service? Where do we need more help? Why are we having so many issues on 24th Street? You know, we should, we should do a better project there to get that fixed. So these dashboard systems will be able to help us take a look at that. It's all map-based. It all sits on top of our GIS, we're able to track these assets and dive into them. Really, the crown jewel of this whole system is the, or the citizen management. And what I mean by that is with this program, what we're going to have is we're going to have our own app where a citizen can download that app and if they come across maybe a streetlight outage, that's pretty common, they can select that. It's all geocoded so that based on their location, they can send it in, it's routed to the right person so we don't have to play this telephone game that sometimes happens in public service. Gets the right person, they can verify, yes, we do have a streetlight outage. They can respond to that citizen and say, "Thank you, we received your complaint, we're addressing it." And then when that work is resolved, they get a communication back that says, you know, "Thank you, we've taken care of this." It doesn't have to be just reported on the app. We can have, if someone calls in, of course, our administrative personnel will follow the same process. They'll identify where this work needs to happen and the same process continues where that notification would go to the folks that need to take a look at it. Or if you're sitting at home and you have a complaint or an issue that you need to log on your computer and do, we'll have this on our city website. So there'll be multiple ways to communicate with us with the entire goal of us being able to take that information and provide a more responsive and an efficient process for our We talked a little bit about the fleet and the 700 and some pieces of equipment that we have to manage. Our shop foreman, every Monday morning for four hours, sits at his desk and goes through a printout about that thick of vehicle maintenance that may or may not have to be done. What I mean by that is our existing system is so old and antiquated that it can't tell him what he needs to maintain that week, so he manually has to go through and fix this. That system will be replaced and those four hours can now be spent doing something much more efficient than looking at paper records. When we interact with citizens, whether they want to come in and apply for a building permit or submit plans to us, we don't have a way to do that right now. The city of O'Fallon, Illinois has a portal, and ours will be set up almost exactly like this, where if you wanted to apply for a permit or call for an inspection or make a payment to the city of Minot, you can come to this portal and do that. The nice thing about this is it'll be connected to our ERP software so that when we take these funds in, it goes right to the right account. There'll be some outreach and training that we have to do, obviously, for our contractors and personnel, but the end benefits will be huge for this kind of system. Electronic plan review is something that we can't do right now. So if someone submits a set of paper plans to us, it has to make its way manually around the office. With this system, an architect or an engineer can submit their plans online. It automatically gets routed to the right person based on what kind of project it is. And we can have multiple city staff reviewing this plan at the same time, cutting down on the number of hours that it takes us to review the plan. Comments are sent back, new plans come back in, the software is smart enough to look at what changes have been made so that we can verify if corrections were made or not. The transparency that this will provide to us, not only to city staff, to managers, but also the architects and the owners, you know, they need to know where their projects at in the process. I mentioned a little bit about, you know, when we have these projects that have dozens of tasks, how do we keep all this straight? This is the system that'll help us do that. Once we set up our workflows in this system, if someone applies for a permit and we go through this workflow, obviously, we can't do a framing inspection without the foundation being poured. So these sort of things, once they're coded in, help not only us to stay accountable, but the contractors and everyone else so that we can provide a better service. Dashboards will be important in this, not only because our staff needs to keep track of what's going on, but because these are all map-based and they'll be on our city's webpage. Maybe you, as a property owner, see a project happening down the street that may affect you. You can go to the map, you can click on it, you can see who the permittee is, who the contractor is, and get that information in case you had questions on that. So that's a service that we're excited to be able to provide to the city. Going forward, this is going to be a very difficult project for us, lots of time involved. We're going to lead the effort, but public works, community development, IT, and we'll have to coordinate that with finance and others, we're going to be very, very involved in this project. And it's going to be a big lift. But I think in the end, what we're trying to do is provide a much better service. We're trying to bring the city into the 21st century on the operations side, be able to give us the data that we need to make the decisions, and then always be responsive and increase communication to our residents. Lastly, I did want to give a brief update on our flood insurance map. So you'll see here in the picture, this is, this is the map that has now been re-released to us from FEMA. So if you'll remember, June 9th, 2017, FEMA issued us the preliminary flood insurance rate maps. The city had several comments that we submitted, and that delayed the map implementation by about a year and a half or a little more, and now they're back. So we have probably about another four to maybe eight weeks total before this notice will be published in the federal register, and then that will start our 90-day appeal period clock. So if the city decides not to appeal the maps, then the schedule will go probably sometime later this summer, August or September, the city would receive what's called a letter of final determination. And what that says is these maps are now considered approved and the city has up to six months to pass an ordinance to basically make these, the official regulatory maps. So if that timeline would move forward, then likely early '21, probably that February timeframe, that's when these maps would be adopted. So the big takeaway, while we may not have a flood risk or a reduced flood risk this spring, which is always good, we encourage people to buy flood insurance. Talk to your flood insurance agents. If you have a question on whether you're within the high-risk zones that we have, call us. We're happy to help, we're happy to answer that question, but you've got to talk to your flood insurance agent. And we recommend getting flood insurance just because when these maps go effective, if you have a flood insurance policy in place, you will be grandfathered into that lower-rate zone. So if you don't do that and your mortgage company would require you to have flood insurance, you will pay the actuarial rate, which can be several thousand dollars a year. At least with this, you might start at $500 or $600 and incrementally go up over time. But if you don't take advantage of that grandfathering, so the policy has to be in place before the maps go effective, you will miss out on that. And that could be very devastating to you and your family. With all that said, I wanted to thank the city council and the city manager for supporting us with all these projects. We have a lot of big lifts in front of us and couldn't do that without the budget support and whatnot. So we appreciate that and we'd be open to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Lance. I appreciate it, very in-depth and detailed and some great information. One last little tidbit, too. I was also notified today that the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services is also going to be doing a big push on the flood insurance awareness, seeing as some other areas of the state likely are going to have some high risks this year. So we'll also look for some of that even prior to our information getting pushed out there. Any questions for our city engineer? If not, I just wanted to bring attention to one of your very first slides. I didn't want to interrupt you, only as it's been brought to my attention sometime in the past about those really nice cabinet decor wraps and ask how much we were spending on those. And if you could, on the decorative wraps for the cabinets, kind of fill everybody in on where those came from a number of years ago.
Mr. Mayor, we paid zero for that because the Lions Club was gracious enough to install those. And so, you know, they had a nice competition for the art that was approved and those cabinet wraps went on, and I think they look great.
Part of the city beautification, so I thought... Part of the city beautification, so I thought it was a nice little highlight point. Any other comments or discussion? Very nice, Lance. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, that takes us to our liaison reports. Starting off, I figured to just go back to the old, let's start alphabetical order. Alderman Janser.
I have no meeting to report on. Thank you.
Alderman Olson.
Nothing to report on.
Alderman Patagula.
Nothing, sir.
Alderman Pittner.
I comes before oh, but I have nothing to report on.
Am I, am I that far off this evening? Okay, thank you. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pittner, thank you for attending Visit Minot for me last week. I did want to comment, thanks to former city mayor Barney, and one of the subcommittees funded or formulated under IEDC, the incubator committee. We've received some funding to facilitate a feasibility study for a incubator in the community, so I'm sure that many of you will be contacted about that, and I think that's an exciting revelation that's happening in the community as well.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then Alderman Wolski.
Planning and zoning steering meets tomorrow at 8 o'clock, if you want to come talk about zoning ordinances.
Are you bringing coffee? With that, we have run out of agenda items this evening. We'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Pittner.
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Regard.